I will call a meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Ms. Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Felixson?
Yes.
Mayor Keith?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add an item H, ordinances and resolutions. The resolution that just came in email, resolution approving agreement with Mike Seahawk. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Citizen comments? Hearing none, seeing none, no public hearings, we have reading and approval of minutes from June 8th.
We'll move approval of the regular minutes from June 8th meeting.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. We have the June 8th condensed version of the minutes.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of June 8th meeting.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. I'll move approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills and the community add information.
I'll second it.
Any discussion or questions on any of the items?
Line item 50, we see we bought a surveillance camera for thirty-one hundred bucks. Where is that camera located?
Reggie can explain what we got it for.
So that is a camera that we're able to use and deploy wherever we may deem necessary for other criminal intervention and investigations. So it is a movable camera. It's not a permanent camera.
Oh, it's not, okay.
So that was in response to like with the park vandalism and stuff and so for seeing trends, then they can set up some surveillance to try to catch people doing stuff.
So it's not a permanent mount, it's just one you can kind of put up and take down. Okay.
It's currently over by your place.
Yeah, looks like a tree.
They're not walking out of my underwear then.
Bird else, looks like a bird else. So he's got time.
Better make sure I get clothes on when I go out with the garbage then, I suppose.
Any, any other questions or comments?
Line item thirty-seven, for water treatment plant lime for twenty-nine thirty. Is it on sale?
It's, it's probably just an adjustment to a bill is what it is. Or it's, yeah, we'll have to check on that one.
They needed a half a bucket more or something. Anything else? All in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Petitions requesting communications, purchase of Christmas decorations in July or June. Chamber of Commerce requests.
Yeah, so the discussion started with the fact that with, with the wind that we were seeing lately, the, the old Christmas decorations were really beat up pretty bad. Actually Summer Anderson took over in the chamber and she's been really active and, and aggressive at looking at issues and stuff. And, and she brought that one up to me and, and, and I said, well, yeah, I, that's one of those things that we should take a look at. Cause we, we store them and we put them up, but I think the last go around, they were purchased. I don't think we paid anything on the last set either. But, but she turned around, she raised all the funding for it and then asked me whether or not the city would be interested in making the purchase because we're tax exempt, we're gonna wind up storing them, we're gonna wind up putting them up. And, and realistically, that's a good way of doing it. So then I said, could you send me a letter and just, you know, indicate that, you know, the chamber would be contributing the money to the city to pay for that? And she did, and that should have been in the packet. And so then really it's just accepting a donation of the funds and then I'll, I'll go ahead and do the purchase of the Christmas decorations.
It's a good deal.
It is, it's, I was really surprised how fast they were able to raise the funds for that.
Yeah, we're very lucky to have her, she's doing a good job.
I think we're lucky to have the local businesses and individuals.
Yep, everybody. Everybody involved.
That was wonderful.
Yeah, it's quite an extensive list of people that donated, so yeah, thanks to all the donors for sure.
Is there any life left in our old ones?
No.
Are they file or?
I, yeah.
Donatable to somebody that's looking or?
I think they're, most, most of them are not in good, good shape.
I don't even think you could see them when they were up last year, like the blue lights on them. Yeah, hard to tell if they were on or not.
I guess there might be some issue, or some, some use for someone if they're LED lights, but if they're not.
Just curious if there was any value if somebody neighboring community was interested to do something with them.
Anything that we have that before we throw it away, we'll look at it and see if it's valuable and then put it on the auction. But I, that's not what I'm hearing from anybody, that they're worth anything.
Yeah, they take a beating, for sure.
Okay, any, any other discussion? Did we have a, a motion on this? No.
Do you need, need one?
Need a motion, yeah.
Yep, I'll move on that motion accepting a contribution of sixteen thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars from Morris Chamber to authorize the purchase of thirty-five full mounted snowflake Christmas decorations.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And ordinances and resolutions, we have a resolution entering into an agreement for twenty-two transit funding.
The first big project Whitney worked on. So I don't, I don't know if you want to share with them thoughts on that?
It was a one-year grant application where the previous was twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one together. So it had been worked on since twenty-nineteen. But yeah, we got through it and we're sitting okay with our estimated fair revenues that there should be zero local share for operating expenses at the moment. So we're pretty much close to finalizing the last numbers, but that's the process.
Zero local share is always good.
Well, and just the, the only note I would make is that as we go through the processes at the state and federal level, I know that there's a great big huge transportation infrastructure bill that's gonna be coming up at the federal level. And we've seen funding come out of that before. So it's gonna be interesting to see what happens with, with this whole process moving forward, funding wise.
I will move a resolution entering into an agreement with the state of Minnesota Department of Transportation.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Felixson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Keith?
Yes.
Resolution accepting FAA grant for the airport runway extension phase two project.
Yeah, this is a big grant, they're actually very anxious to get this thing all signed, sealed, delivered. So normally what we do is we'll get the grant to offer, we'll bring it to the council and, and we'll, you know, you'll approve it. And then I'll sign all the documents, I think I've been asked three separate times already where we're at on signing the documents within the last week, you know, so they're very anxious on this. But the big thing with this thing is you can see the amount in here, four thousand six hundred and twenty-three thousand five thirty-three.
Four million.
Or four million six hundred and twenty-three thousand. And, and you're gonna be looking at a state contract that has zero. And that is not a mistake because the federal government's paying a hundred percent of the cost. But we still have to do a state grant because they're the ones that implement the grants for airports. So this is the last part of that runway extension and rebuild of the, the runway and the extension of the, the taxiway at the airport.
It's amazing project.
And local is zero also.
Local zero. Yep. So I'll total that project. The only money the city put into that whole, whole effort for extending everything out was twenty-five thousand dollars for the master plan, which is good up until another extension would possibly take place, which I don't see that. You know, but we, we didn't see this either. So that's it, you know, and, and nobody else had to put in any other money either.
Did, did we pay that or did we get reimbursed?
No, we paid that. But that was, you know, it's, it's our master plan.
Regardless?
It was the easiest thing to do. You know, and then actually the, the, the total cost of the master plan was what, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars? So we paid twenty-five thousand towards that.
I will move accepting a resolution for the airport runway fourteen thirty-two extension phase two project.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, further discussion? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Felixson?
Yes.
Mayor Keith?
Yes.
And we have.
Next one's a MinDOT.
MinDOT.
Grant agreement, so it's a separate grant agreement with MinDOT. In this one, there's no local, there's no, don't mount designated in there. I'll move on the resolution authorizing execution of the Minnesota MinDOT grant agreement for the airport improvement, excluding land acquisition twenty-twenty-one.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Felixson?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor Keith?
Yes.
We have a resolution establishing East Sixth Street, North Columbia, North Iowa Improvement Project and ordering feasibility studies.
Yeah, so this is, we, we actually talked about this project in two thousand nineteen or twenty going into twenty-one. And I recommended that we, we not do it in twenty-twenty-one because of what was going on with COVID and knowing and understanding that we're gonna wind up dealing with residents. There's gonna be special assessments in this project. So we're gonna have to have a public hearing in October to present that information. We're gonna have to try to figure out how we're gonna fund this. There's some unique situations in this one that, that make it a little bit more difficult to fund. For example, on North Iowa Avenue, we don't have water there, we don't have curb and gutter there. We do have the road and there is a sanitary sewer that runs down that road and that needs to be redone. But technically, there's only three property owners, maybe four, on that entire stretch of road. And so then we'll have to take a look at that. But one of the things I'll, I'll note that as, as we get into the feasibility study on these, and we still don't have very good information on the American Rescue Plan funding because of the way it's, it's being handled at state level. But it, it's my belief that we're gonna be able to use all that money for, for infrastructure. And one of the best uses of that might be to pay the city share of an infrastructure project like this one. So when we look at this project, we're looking and everybody knows East Sixth Street is bad. They did some patching on it and that's probably not gonna hold very long. But East Sixth Street from, actually California to the next avenue already has water. I'm, I'm not sure when that got done, but it's got PVC for water. But the sewer's bad in that whole stretch going up to Columbia Avenue. And the road's bad, the curb and gutter needs to be done, the water needs to be done on the rest of the stretch. There's one side of the block or a portion of the houses on the north side of East Sixth Street between Montana and Columbia that actually have sewer in their back alley. And you may remember that they had a failure and they petitioned us to have, have that sewer repaired and do an assessment on it, which is, every once in a while you run into some weird sewers that are in back alleys. On Tenth Street, we ran into the same thing. So that project is, is, is there. And then from Columbia, on Columbia from East Seventh Street to Tenth Street, we know we've been having problems with breaks. And so we're looking at redoing everything there, the, the road, the curb, gutter, water, sewer, everything in there. And then as I said, on Iowa Avenue, we have the sewer issue that's in there. And then the road's really bad and that's all the way out to the, the city limits that the road is bad. But one additional item that we have in there and I've met, talked to Superior Industries, I met with Brad Zimmel out there. Superior has a very unique sewer system out there that I'm not quite sure how it got put in, why it's set up the way it is. But basically they have a two-inch sewer line coming out of Superior that goes up and around where the antenna tower is. And then it comes back to Iowa Avenue and actually has to go uphill a little bit and then come back down Iowa. And so that's, that's accomplished by a pump system, a lift system that literally they grind everything up and then they shove it through that two-inch pipe and it comes up and around and comes back down. And we know when they did concrete work out at Superior, they did a lot of stuff where they store their, their conveyors that they're building. There's a four-inch line that got put in somewhere along there and we're not quite sure. We're trying to figure out exactly where that got put because they've had a change in personnel and, and, and other things. We're thinking it got put in from the lift station area and then maybe down between where that farm used to be and where the car dealership is, which hopefully is something that, that, that happened, but we'll find that out. The other thing is that it's private property. So everything from Iowa Avenue to the east now belongs to Superior. And typically whenever we're doing assessment projects, you know, the property owner's responsible from the main line into their property. And I don't know what the history of that was and how that got set up and why that got set up. But ideally, it's one of those things that we would like to probably take a look at now and maybe shifting it back. And then one added piece of this, just for discussion, is that at one time WSN did a study on how you could service that entire area there going east, Superior, you know, where more plumbing is, everything that's there with, with, and then coming back across to everything from the, the east of Iowa, the ballpark townhomes going, going east. And actually Jeff Kuhn is working on a potential federally funded project that you could put water in sewer in East Seventh Street. And eventually connect it all up and run it across because that residential subdivision across twenty-eight has wells and septic tanks and everybody else has wells and septic tanks and stuff. So that is something Jeff's working on and potentially, you know, you could drop them into that system and then not have to worry about getting them to Iowa Avenue. But that, that's part of what they're gonna look at with the engineering study. And then we'll, we'll sit down and talk to Superior about that and just try to figure out the best way to do that. So, you know, the first step is to order the engineering and, and financial feasibility studies so we can figure out what needs to be done, what the initial estimate is and how we would try to finance it. Cause we're probably gonna have to do a bond issue. So this just, the resolution just creates the project.
Including the east or including Seventh Street and all of that would be part of this feasibility study?
No.
Oh, okay. That's not.
No, it's just, just this project area. And then one last piece of it, just so you know, normally what we do for special assessment projects is we'll get an appraiser to give us an appraisal level on a potential benefit to a property owner of, of what the assessment value would be. And so I reached out to Bill Waiters from, who's done them for us for, for the last probably five, six of them. And, and what I have to do is I have to go out and take some pictures and provide him some maps and then he'll come out and he'll, he does like a general appraisal of what he thinks the value is gonna be before and after. You know, and a really good example of, of that is if you go down below the high school, North Court, South Court, Brook, you know, that area there, if, if you saw the pictures before and if you go down there now and look at that neighborhood, you know, the drainage got taken care of, the streets, the curb gutter, everything got taken care of and it's a beautiful neighborhood. You know, and, and, and we know that homes are selling for, for very good prices now and stuff. But that's, that's one of the things that we do just to show people in assessment hearing what we think this is gonna do to your property.
Any idea what the cost is of that study?
For the, well, it's just, it'll be part of the engineering costs for the project.
Okay.
So they don't really have a value.
Roll it into the.
Yep.
Whole package.
They roll it into the project.
Okay.
Yeah, and approving this resolution does not guarantee that project is gonna go. You know, there's certain steps, you know, once we get the feasibility, then we can decide as, you know, should we continue or not? This just gets it rolling.
I can move on that resolution establishing East Sixth Street, North Columbia Avenue, North Iowa Avenue Improvement Project, ordering that feasibility study then.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Are we still monitoring Superior? I know we had issues with that two-inch line, having issues of being plugged up where they need to make sure that it's checked, what's running through that line so we don't have the issue until we get this done?
Yep. Yeah, so everything's been pretty, the biggest issue that I think they had was there's a grit problem with the cleaning products that they're using. There's a lot of people at work out there and wash their hands. And, and so then, you know, that's their responsibility for keeping that, that system clean. And, and as far as I know, it's been going really well because we haven't had any issues with it. But we do go out there two, three, four times a year to monitor that and make sure everything's running. But it's, it's a really, what's the best way to put, it's a really rough system. You know, it take, it, it takes a lot to keep that system going. And realistically, that's probably not the best way to have a sewer system set up.
Thank you. So this should improve their system tremendously or double the size at least or triple it from two inches to a four inch.
I have problems with a four-inch line, I can't imagine what a two-inch line would be like.
Okay, any, any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Felixson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Mayor Keith?
Yes.
And we have a resolution establishing a West Sixth Street railroad crossing project.
Yeah, so this, if you remember, the railroad came to us and said we'd like to take out West Sixth Street. And we said, no, you're not gonna do that. And they said, well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna leave it and we're gonna upgrade the, the railroad crossing arms, then it's gotta be done the right way. Because on the north side, people actually had to cross on the street side of the crossing to, to get across to the other side and that's not allowable. You know, the current system that they have, that, that's the way it was set up. But, so what they're gonna do is move, they're gonna change their crossing around. And then what we're looking at doing and, and we've talked about this before, Jeff's looked at it before, but in the end, we never established a project to get the actual engineering and feasibility costs of this. You know, and then how are we gonna fund it? Cause this, there is no funding available for this and it's not gonna be a big expensive project. And we're gonna have to pay for it, probably out of reserves or something. And, and we'll figure that out. But so, so there's a basic plan that's been laid out and MinDOT's looked at it because they're responsible for railroad crossings everywhere, not just on their highways. And the railroad has to get permission from them because it's a transportation asset. And then we met with the railroad people, which in some cases is very difficult because they have a lot of things and they're very busy and, and stuff. But the general idea is to revamp the curbing and the parking lot entrances and exits to facilitate this new railroad crossing. And then we put in a sidewalk on the north side that's on the, the, the safe side of the crossing. And then on the south side, there is no curb and gutter along that, that block that's on the west side of the railroad tracks. And so the idea would be we'd put in curb and gutter and there'd be an entrance into that parking and that empty lot area and stuff. But it just directs people the right way. There is a sidewalk, but there's, you know, you can just drive, drive on there any, any way you want. And that's not necessarily acceptable by the railroad, you know, because they don't want people just wandering up onto the tracks and stuff. So. So they'll, they'll put together the, the, the actual plan, bring it back to us and take a look at it. And at one point I thought the railroad was gonna do it right away. But lately, you know, we haven't, haven't heard anything from the railroad about it. Trying to get a hold of them, it sometimes is very difficult, but it's something that has to be done. And whether it's this fall or next spring, we're not quite sure. But the first step is to get the engineering done so that you have a plan in front of you and you can give it a thumbs up. It'll actually dress up that area and it'll look much better. I'll move on the resolution establishing West Sixth Street Railroad Crossing Project.
I'll second. Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Felixson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Keith?
Yes.
A resolution accepting a proposal, proposal from precision concrete cutting for sidewalk maintenance.
Yeah, and the mayor had asked me about, I gave you a sample in the package of what it looks like. Here's the actual total report that they have of all the various sites that they identified along, along this project area. The only thing I would tell you is yesterday I went out and met with Jeff Kuhn and, and architects for the parks. And Jeff and I got into a discussion and it was kind of a, a light bulb moment for him. We included West Fifth Street on this because it's, we looked at main routes. But West Fifth Street is a state highway. And Jeff said you shouldn't be doing sidewalks on a state highway because the state should be doing sidewalks on the state highway. And, and it's like, okay. But I, I haven't had a chance to look at and try to figure out what that is. So I think if, if we pass a resolution tonight, we pass a resolution authorizing the work less, the West, West Fifth Street work. And then I'll figure out what the amount of that is. And then I'll go back, I'll go back to them and they're perfectly fine, they know exactly. All I, all he has to do is just pull that out of the proposal. And then one of the things I, I want you to know is that the next step for, for us, I think, is to identify the next areas. You know, because you're talking about, and, and there's two parts to this that are very interesting. One is that they, they literally walked every bit of the sidewalk and looked at every single crack in, in every single joint in the sidewalks to determine whether or not they met the ADA standard, which is a quarter of an inch versus a half an inch. And so if we do it to the ADA standard, it was gonna be the fifty-eight thousand dollars. But everything is smooth, it's perfect, it's, it's the way it's supposed to be. And I think that's, that's what I would recommend that you do. And, and then we'll get to the next project area, start identifying like West, East Eighth Street's got some bad sidewalks, West, West Seventh Street, West, you know, we have a survey that WSN did that showed where there's a lot of bad, bad sidewalk areas. And then the other thing is Jim Dittbener is gonna take this and everywhere it says replace, he is gonna look at that and determine what we need to do to deal with that. It could be we could mud jacket because it's sunk, you know, you mentioned you might have a sidewalk that's sunk. It could be that we have to take it out and cut a tree root and then put. It could be that we have to take it out and cut a tree root and then put a new one in, but. They, I, they did exactly what they said they were gonna do and they identified all of those. So there's a lot of spots on these sidewalks. As you can see, this is just one, one small area, but we took some of the, the worst ones to begin with. And then, uh, what they'll do is they'll just come and grind them down. And then they'll be smooth to an ADA standard and, um. We just go from there. The only, the only other thing I thought of is that. I don't know how you would notify all the property owners that we're gonna come in and do that other than making a general statement in public and. Maybe putting something in the utility bills or something, but, uh. I can't imagine that a property owner is gonna get upset when somebody comes onto their sidewalk and starts grinding off the edge.
If there's, uh, homeowners in town that, um, are necessarily have been identified and would like. To have some work done, can they somehow get on that list as well or not?
Well, I, it wouldn't be in, in, on these roads because they already identified it for them.
But I'm having.
But, but if, so then the answer to that would be yes. Uh, I think that would be part of the next step. Is to start identifying the next project area and if somebody has something, um, that they wanna have done. You know, we could certainly do that because I know in looking at some of these areas, there's, there's some kind of side issues that are there, maybe with the driveway. Or some wings on a driveway that, that could be ground down too and, and, uh, you know. I mean, the nice part about this is they literally. Aren't going to an area and setting up a massive operation. They're literally going crack to crack. And so if we have some additional work, all we have to do is have them look at it. Or maybe have, have the property owner contact them and when they come to town, uh, they could do it for them. And then do some side deals. I'm, I'm sure they're interested in doing that.
Yeah, I think good if we could get that information out to the public somehow, maybe let people know, but. Now would be the time because they're gonna be in town doing work anyways, so.
Yep.
It seems like a lot of money, but you don't, you know, there's, I think eight hundred and thirty-two different. Trip hazards that were identified, so when you start looking at the spoke of work.
Well, and then I think I provided it in here.
A quarter inch isn't very much.
They did an estimate if, if you had to, I mean, the, the fact is that they're, they're raised up and they're a tripping hazard. And, uh, and, you know, we, we're doing it to an ADA standard, but I think in here. He had put a calculation, yeah, so it's eight hundred and thirty-two and obviously we're gonna take out West Fifth Street now, but. The cost estimate to replace those, uh, sections of sidewalk was about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You know, so you're, you're gonna save a lot. If, if, if it's my property. I, I'm gonna love them coming in and do that, you know, because I don't wanna rip out all my sidewalk and. Just to get rid of a couple little bumps here and there. Actually, I had a property owner that called me that was upset about Oregon Avenue and. And it was like. It's like half an inch is what his sidewalk dropped down. On that brand new sidewalk on Oregon and we're not doing Oregon, but, but that's one of those that they can just come in and grind it and it'll be perfectly fine.
Yeah, I had the mudjackers do mine and I'm very happy. That was a couple of years ago that. They come in and mudjack my, all my sidewalks and they really haven't moved much, so I was pretty happy with that.
But to your wording in here, it looks like you're planning on trying to do a follow-up project yet this year?
Yep.
So I mean, do we have a dollar amount that you're looking to?
Well, I think originally we had, we had talked about two hundred thousand dollars worth of sidewalk work. And, you know, now, now you're gonna have less than fifty with this when you take out West Fifth Street and so then, you know, we, we. We'll pick out some additional routes and stuff and get a proposal and bring it back to you, but. And, and this will be an ongoing thing, so every year I think you'd look at doing a few roads here and there.
And the timeframe to get this work done that's proposed here is like nine, ten days that I read in here?
Yeah.
I mean, it's short term, so it'd be great to, to hit our list. I mean, we have a big list to start with, so. I would love to see us keep moving on it and get, get caught up or to keep working on it.
So is this just West Fifth Street, East Seventh Street, Columbia Avenue, South? It's, it's not like everything in between, it's just those specific.
No, it's just those specific streets, so.
So on Columbia, are, are we gonna be doing anything with the, in our proposed per, uh, project that we're talking about with? East Sixth Street, are we gonna be, is there?
We're, we're not planning on doing sidewalk.
No.
On that one, no.
No, we're not, okay.
No, and then the, the biggest question, so if you look at this map, this is, this is what you're looking at is. Those main roads, California and, uh, um, South Street and, and Columbia Avenue and Seventh Street. And the biggest question Jeff raised was, you know, he's talking about doing a project maybe in twenty twenty-four. On Seventh Street and do you wanna do any sidewalk work? Well, there's some, there's some raised sidewalks and do you wanna leave them? Till twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five? You know, and that would be simply beyond line or ballpark townhomes. So you're probably talking a dozen of them, so it's like, yeah, just go ahead and do them. And leave them that way. Uh, I'll just mention one other thing really quick. Um, we talked about sidewalks and we, we met with Safe Routes to School and, and they're putting together the final plan that they're gonna actually. Asked if I wanted you to, uh, I wanted them to present it to you and I said, yes, absolutely, because. Lot of work went in, into it with a lot of people, but. One of, one of the questions that, that I raised during that discussion actually raised with Jeff Kuhn is that. I'm not quite sure why sidewalks got taken out by the Dairy Queen. That doesn't make any sense that our sidewalks end at First Street and South Street is a main route to the school. And so actually Jeff and, and through Safe Routes to School, um, they're, they're looking at what the state funding programs are. That's a highway, it's a state highway and so now there, there might be some state funding available to put a sidewalk in, so we're talking about the possibility of getting one. Put in from First Street all the way out to Jerry's U-Save. So all along the way, you know, people can walk on a sidewalk instead of walking on the road like you see. From time to time, all the time, you know, you have a, you have a town, town home development where they have no way to get out. You know, to Elm Street or, or to come to town and stuff. So there's more to the, to it than just this. There's some comprehensive looks at some sidewalk issues moving forward.
I'll move on that resolution accepting a proposal from Precision Concrete Cutting for Sidewalk Maintenance.
And that would be less West Fifth Street.
Less West Fifth.
Fifth Street, yep.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that resolution?
I think it's a good bang for the buck at about seventy bucks, uh, sidewalk to get it, ADA standards, you know, to taper it back. Yeah, I think it's super.
It's a good start. I mean, we've been talking about sidewalks for a long time and getting them up, so this is a great inexpensive way to start this project.
For sure. Any other, uh, comments? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gellison?
Yes.
Mayor Hughes?
Yes. We have resolution qualifying part-time police officers for P E R A.
They're gonna, they're gonna be on the other side. I think, they're, he's gonna be on the other side.
Oh.
I think that's, that's who you're looking for, I know. I just know he's always part of our discussions. So, um, this is a resolution, um, Reggie's done an outstanding job over, over his time as chief. Of finding police officers that can, or actually deputies that can fill in as. Part-time police officers to help with shifting and stuff like that. And this is more of a bookkeeping thing to, uh. Make sure that, uh, we're, we're documenting them right according to P E R A. Uh, as part-time police officers and, um. We'll, we'll probably have a few of them working moving forward depending on, you know, what, what happens. We're still. Short one police officer because of workers' compensation issue. And, and that's a good way to help fill in some of that time for shifting and stuff like that, but, uh, that's what this is all about.
I will move on a resolution qualifying part-time police officers for P E R A. I think if we look at any of the media and see the shortage statewide, national, nationwide. On trying to have officers, anything we can do to try to, to keep our force. Up as close to full as we can, I think we have to take the steps to do that.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the resolution? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Gellison?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor Hughes?
Yes. And we'll have the. Um, emailed resolution approving agreement with Mike Seahawk. For Public Access Channel System Management.
This, just to extend it out for another year and it's funded by the cable franchise money.
I'll move on that resolution approving agreement with Mike Seahawk for Public Access Channel System Management.
I'll second that. Any discussion? We'll have roll call vote for this resolution, please.
Councilmember Gellison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. And finally City Manager Report.
I'll just comment on two things. Uh, one is, uh, we're working, uh, we met with Otter Tail Power and, and. We identified the fact that they still have some publicly owned power credits available this year. Next year, they're not gonna have any credits. Uh, available based upon what, what they're seeing, but. What, what we talked about is, as long as they have credits available and nobody's taking them up on them. You know, uh, maybe we should do another project and the next one would be the library. And so actually Chris has been working really hard. Uh, to get information on that and we've got, we've got a thumbs up from Otter Tail on the credits. And, and the, the next thing that I'm waiting on is whether or not Blue Horizon would be willing to. Allow for a change order to their contract to add that additional project. And if that's the case, then I'll probably bring it back to you at the next meeting. Uh, they went over and looked at it, the roof's in good shape because we had some work done on it previously. Uh, they looked at the trees, no trees are gonna come out around the library. Uh, to see if, uh, it would be suitable for putting solar up in the roof and it looks good, so. It's just one more project and then we, we'd have to fund it. Um, Otter Tail up their reimbursement per kilowatt. For, uh, solar from twelve fifty to fifteen hundred and, uh, and I think the bid from. Blue Horizon per kilowatt was less than three thousand per kilowatt and so I, I haven't seen the number yet for the library. What the number of kilowatts would be that we'd put up in the roof, but it just makes sense to do that. And then the only thing, other thing I would mention. Maybe as kudos to you as a council, to the public, to everybody in Morris, but. Um, the League of Minnesota Cities is currently holding their, their annual conference virtually. So I sat in on two sessions this morning and really the nature of the sessions were. Um, communicating with people in the current environment we're in. And, um, we allow every single person that wants to come and talk to the council. The opportunity to come and talk to the council. We don't require them to sign up. You know, if they do, we put their name on there. We don't time limit them. And there's a lot of cities, there's one city that, uh, was part of my breakout group that they, they, they allow citizens' comments. At the end of all their business. And it's like, what does that tell you about that community? And then there's other cities that literally cannot get any work done. Uh, because council members are fighting, uh, the public's fighting, uh, they just sit back and forth. Actually, one of the cities, there's a restraining order, uh, from the mayor to one of the council members. And so then that council member wasn't, apparently it was a big battle that wasn't allowed to come to the council meetings because couldn't be. It was, it was just bizarre, but you know, as I'm listening to these other cities, you know, and we don't have the issues like. They're facing down in the Twin Cities with, with police and racial problems and all that kinda stuff. Uh, but I think generally people have a right to say what they wanna say. I think they're heard. I think it's respectful. Uh, there might be disagreements, you know, based upon what I've seen and, um. That's a good thing. So I think on a scale of one to ten, we're probably closer towards ten. Uh, and there's definitely some cities that are at less than one when it comes to dealing with the public, but, um. I just wanted to mention that to you because I think that was very interesting to me being part of that discussion. And then I'd answer any other questions you have.
On the tennis courts at, at Green River. Is there any thought of relocating them? Instead of having them in the, where we're gonna have a lot of water all the time? I mean, that's our overflow, it fills up and. Is there, maybe we can go to east here or, or out. By the river, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, maybe if we're gonna do some tennis courts, maybe we should think about just relocating them.
So.
It'd be probably cheaper to build and have them.
So, so the answer to that is yes. And actually it was interesting because I was on the Morris model, um, Thursday afternoon, uh, Zoom meeting and. Eric Buchanan's one of the coaches. And then Brittany House is also one of the coaches. And you know, one of, what I think, I don't know who was talking, I think Tony Reimers was talking about. In order for them to have a tournament, they have to have six courts and they only have five. Uh, but one of the, one of the things that we came up in the Morris model meeting with is. Why not put the two tennis courts over on the north side of the five tennis courts? Cause they have room over there.
Oh, sure, by the bus garage there.
By the bus garage. So I, I sent out an email to Tony Reimers and Troy Ferguson and said, would you be interested in us building our court there? It's out of the water, the public can still use it because they use it all the time now. It serves you better and, and everything and then we could focus on maybe doing a soccer field down in Green River. Which is gonna fare much better in a flood type situation, so yes, you know, that is.
Yeah.
That is something that, that.
It's all together and still spread out, so when, if they are able to hold something instead of having to run all over.
Yep, so we'll, we'll see, I, you know, I can't imagine. I did start doing the legwork to try to figure out what it would cost to. Our guys obviously will be able to tear out the old one. That, that's not gonna take much to do that, but to build a new one that's concrete and the fencing and. The surfacing and all that. You know, trying to figure that out, so I'm, I'm working on that right now.
You know, another thought, I think it's a great idea too, first of all, with the location adding there, but. That little triangle chunk out there at, uh, at the city park, we always have been trying to. Figure out what to do with that little chunk there that's kinda over where the old horseshoe pit was. You know, if we could put a tennis court out there also, the only, the campers could utilize it and. I don't know if it's something we could think about or not. What, approximately what would it cost to build a new tennis court? Do you have any idea?
Um, you're probably talking between sixty and seventy thousand, I think, with surfacing. I talked to Eagle, they just did.
Nice addition out there, give the camper something to do.
Yeah, it depends on the size of it and, and stuff like that, but, but we'll get that information for you.
The, the softball complex, um, I think, I think I heard that the school board approved funding. Um, have they asked you for a specific dollar amount?
No.
Okay.
Not yet, but, you know, I've been asked, you know, what our interest is to participate in that and the, the one thing. You know, I'll tell you and I, I've told them is. It was really difficult for us to participate in the first round. Because it's not, it's a brand new complex, it's not our complex and when you sit down and you look at. You get, you just did the park tour and if you had a calculator and we're adding up all the things that we have to do in our parks. To try to get them to where we want them to be, you're probably talking over a million dollars. You know, and it's like, how much money do we focus that way versus this way and. You know, one, one of the things when, when we, we participated in that one. And, you know, one, one of the things when, when we, we participated in that one, you know, what I shared with them is that we don't, we don't wanna be seen as an ongoing partner in this complex cause it's not ours. You know, and then let's build two fields, the concession stand, the bathrooms and, and then, you know, you know, that's a good start. And then, you know, try to fundraise and go from there. But they wanna see it all done. You know, the other, the other day I was out there watching and I think they had all three fields going that are there. And then everybody's parked on the road up to almost a water plant. And yet you got that giant parking lot that's empty.
Yeah.
You know, across the road and it's.
They've always been parked on the road for little league games and softball games that go on.
You know, and I know, I know, talking to Brian Herman, you know, that, that they're looking at that issue because it's like, there's a parking lot.
Yeah.
Just park there, walk across the street and walk over. If you wanna sit in the trees, sit in the trees, you know, but that's.
Put some signs up, no parking.
It's convenient and, you know, I, I like to ride bike now on the bike path. And, and when it was really hot, there's like four or five vehicles that were running. So they left their vehicles running to keep the air conditioner on and stuff like that, but.
I would, I would agree with you on that point. I think that we've done more than our share in, uh, helping that project get along.
And it's a great project.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a really good, when it's all said and done, it's gonna be a great project. But, but it's like, we only have so much money and we're talking sidewalks and we're talking tennis courts and we're talking, you know, concession stand bathrooms and in Wells Park and all those kinda things. And, and, uh, the, the architects will come and talk with the park board at the next meeting because they have some good ideas too, you know, about some stuff and what, what to put in parks. You know, and, but, you know, one of the biggest takeaways in the parks is that, like Wells Park, there's, there's no way to facilitate, you know, one of the things that stood out was the fact that we put in sidewalks and it facilitated people moving around in the parks. So like at Chizzy, but in, uh, Pomny Terr Park, I don't know if you realize it, but there's a sidewalk that runs all along the north side of all those things. And then people, if they're going to the bathroom, they just walk down the sidewalk. And it goes all the way out to that old, old swimming area, you know, and, and it just makes it cleaner. It makes it more efficient, uh, and people can move around. And, and there's some good ideas about what to do with that. Even, even small little sections like Genstead Park, there's no sidewalk going up to the picnic shelter. I don't believe there is.
No, there isn't.
But there should be. Cause they're looking at, you know, ADA requirements and how do you get a wheelchair person to that picnic shelter? Lots of good ideas.
Thank you. Just back to that solar credit with Otter Tail, is that retro to the other three projects that we're going ahead with already on the difference from the twelve fifty to fifteen?
Yep.
So we'd be able to get that additional credit on all four of the projects if we're able to do that. Thank you.
Great. Anything else on the city manager report? Okay, anything else come before the council? All right, meeting adjourned.